To our council and committee of the whole meeting for January 23rd, 2025. Bienvenue à notre réunion de conseil pour le 20 janvier. To open this evening, I will pass the floor to councillor Ferran for our land acknowledgement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Je souhaite prendre un moment pour souligner l'importance du territoire sur lequel nous sommes rassemblés. La municipalité de la Depeuse-Weste reconnaît avec respect que nous sommes réunis sur les terres ancestrales des peuples Ashinijnabé, sur les territoires traditionnels des premières nations Lepesing, Temogami et Dokis, désignées par le traité Robinson-Uron. Nous honorons leur lien historique avec le territoire et nous valorisons leur contribution considérable au personnement et au rendement public de la communauté. Se faisant, nous réaffirmons notre engagement et notre responsabilité envers la réconciliation et l'amélioration de notre compréhension des peuples autochtones locaux et de leur culture.
Merci beaucoup. But to number two, declarations of community area interest. Anybody have any to declare? Seeing none, next 3.1, approve the addendum.
It is moved by councillor Gonye and seconded by councillor Paret. Be it resolved that the addendum for the council and committee of the whole meeting held on January the 23rd, 2025 be adopted as presented.
Okay, questions or comments? All in favor? It's Carrie, thank you.
It is moved by councillor Paret and seconded by councillor Gonye. Be it resolved that the agenda for the council and committee of the whole meeting held on January the 23rd, 2025 be adopted as presented.
Okay, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. We have no delegations or petitions this evening, so we'll move straight into Committee of the Whole. 5.1, emergency measures and public safety, and for that I will pass it to Chair Councillor Larrabee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Under 5.11, I have the fire master plan and progress report. So I'll pass it on to our chief, Mr. Frank. Move then.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Madam Mayor and members of council, I present to you tonight a progress report with respect to the fire master plan that was presented back last fall in November from the consultant that we had hired, Bear Consulting Firm. As it was explained from Mr. Beckett at the time of the presentation, the fire master plan and the community risk assessment is items that we look at to develop our bylaws as to what services we're going to provide to council. So the recommendation of this report is that the report be received as progress update on the information and recommendations of the fire master plan presented to council during the November 5th, 2024 meeting by the consultant Bear Integrated Solutions. The fire master plan provides a roadmap for current and future services of the fire department. A total of 29 recommendations were identified and placed in one of three categories. Critical, suggestion of completion of one to 12 months. Short-term suggestion completions in 12 to 48 months. And long-term suggested completions in 48 to 84 months. Some of the recommendations are internal and operational to the fire department. Others involve working with municipal departments such as human resources, building and planning, and the clerks department. Many are currently in progress. I've provided a list of some of the recommendations that we are currently working on. As you see in the list, there are a number of them out of the 29 that are in progress and have been for a little bit. Copy of the current Establishment and Regulating Bylaw, the ENR Bylaw 2019-26 is provided as an attachment for council's review. Recommendation by council at one of the previous meetings in 2024, near the end, was to see after the presentation from Bear Integrated Associates was the current ENR Bylaw. So I presented that or provided that to council for review as well. Copy of the Fire Protection and Prevention Act denoting municipal responsibilities is also provided for council's information in part of the attachments to your file. The fire department has and continues to work on the recommendations to comply with legislative requirements and ensure members are trained to provide prevention programs and emergency services as determined by council through the ENR Bylaw. Some of the recommendations will have human resource costs associated and will be addressed through budgets, while others, such as closing and the sale of Station 3 in Tomico, would provide a review for council. The annual call volume are difficult to predict, however, training of the personnel has been planned as part of the approved budget and the skills and safety of the members for the service being provided. As far as the local impact, some recommendations may have a negative view from the residents, but careful planning has the potential to provide a more effective community protection program in response. Options, options and alternatives, the report is provided, is being provided for information purposes only on the current progress of the recommendations made in the fire master plan and future items for council as the decision makers to consider. In conclusion, that the progress report on the recommendations identified in the fire master plan presented by Bear Integrated Solutions Inc. to council on November 5th, 2024 are currently being addressed, while others are to be considered, and that the supplementary documentation for council's information be accepted. Mr. Chair, if there's any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chief. And we have any comments or questions on this report?
I guess one of the actions, so to bear, we'll be looking at updating the Establishment Bylaw. We'll be bringing that, but one of the other tangible issues that was referenced by the fire chief is to bring back the consideration for the Tomico station for consideration, declaring it surplus, and it's very, you know, it could be a discussion at a future point. But that land would have some value in terms of, well, once that is consolidated with other stations. That's another piece of municipal property that would have some value for us to consolidate and sell the assets.
All right. Thank you, Cecile. Any comments on this?
Madam Mayor? Through you, Mr. Chair. With the Tomico station, will there be equipment that can be sold as well at that time? Or would we need to give the equipment to the same old town?
I could give you a high-level answer, and that the equipment that's there is pretty much non-existent now with respect to, it's the least used live station, and so I think we have a, you know, a bit of the equipment, but certainly that information will be brought back with the full report on that station, probably as early as next meeting.
Thank you. Councillor Paret?
Thank you, Councillor Paret. Did we get feedback from the people around there? And is that station active right now? Does it have trucks and it's, it goes out, there's a fire?
Through you, Mr. Chair. There's a pickup truck with a portable pump is what's housed in that station. As far as members, I have two members that reside in the area. One has gone throughout the winter to the south. So to answer your question rapidly, no.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Monsieur Paret. I see here the critical suggested completion from now to 12 months. So one of them is definitely the full station. And the other one, would it be like training, hiring, a new?
So in the critical categories, one being the ENR Bylaw, because that's what regulates what we're going to do, and that again is council's decision. If council decides that we're a full-service department, we're doing extrication, we're doing interior rescues, we're doing water rescues, that again is all council's decision. We're responding to the islands, all that stuff is council's decision. And again, keep in mind, with it comes the added training that's required, as well as the equipment to be able to do the tasks that is required. We can also look at the municipality and section off sections that, due to the availability of the personnel, due to the availability of equipment, they may only do limited exterior suppression and not do interior suppression. So those are factors that can come into play with it as well. Those were the critical ones that they were looking at. The human resources personnel to establish complete job descriptions, that's one that we are working on. And that again is through the HR department, where I said we have to work with other departments. So getting job descriptions for everything from my position all the way down to a entry-level part-time firefighter, the volunteer firefighters, and work our way all the way through all the different ranks. So those are some of the critical ones that, when they did the analysis, they estimate that those are things that we should be working on right away.
Got it.
A couple other ones that they were referencing were some of our automatic aid agreements. We have them in place, but again, they have to be reviewed and updated to current events.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. Is there any comments or questions again?
Well, just for laypeople, ENR is established in regulating bylaw. It's the bylaw that basically forms the foundation for what the fire service does. And the mutual aid agreements, you might want to just expand on what that is with respect to how we help out other municipalities and they help us on their own periphery.
Through you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. CEO. So there's two components with that. One is the mutual aid agreements, which is a provincially regulated assistance program. At that point, the province can call on any municipality and request their equipment and their personnel to go and deal with a major incident throughout the province. Example, something, some tragedy in Toronto, for example, they could turn around and say, "Okay, West Nipsing, we need four of your trucks to come down and respond to this." We don't have a say in that matter. If the province makes that decision and makes that call, we're going. The other part that our CEO is referring to is our automatic aid agreements. So automatic aid agreements are sections of the municipality that we know we have problems trying to get to and covering. One being, I'll take up towards Deer Lake Road. Prime example, a call that we dealt with today. March Day Warren has, and we have an automatic aid agreement for responding along the highways and structure fires up in that area. Both stations get tiered out. Whoever gets there first starts whatever job is required. And then the other one will come in and either assist, or in our case, it's our municipality, so there is a fee attached to that when they come and assist us. Once we're there, we release them, they go back to their side, we continue on with the job. We also have our automatic aid agreement with French River. Anything over towards North Monetteville, there's an exchange between them and St. Charles as well. There's sections of St. Charles, by the time they come all the way around and back up 64 to get into their site, it's quicker for us to be able to respond to it. So there's an automatic aid agreement. Something comes up in those areas, again, both stations are dispatched. Whoever gets there first does the job. In this case, with, there's sometimes a small fee attached to that as well.
If the, if the, if the province was to order us, let's say to go to Toronto, there would be a fee attached to this as the province would pay West Nipsing, I guess?
So at that time, the more than likely, same under the emergency management program, and I can't confirm at this point because it's never happened. But at the same token, I'll take the large fires that were up in Tomogami. So under the mutual aid program that became, in my former employment, we were notified and placed on standby to go and help protect the town of Tomogami. The M and R deals with the wildlife stuff, but they do not do structure fires. So that's where they may request other departments, other resource, because you've used all the resources you have available, and then they'll request, usually it stays within neighboring departments, and they backfill pretty much the same as we do with the automatic aid. So I'm not sending all the resources from West Nipsing to French River to help out. I'll send one, maybe two stations. So the other night, we had an automatic aid call for a structure fire. We sent two tankers to support them.
So you still have locals protecting the locals?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, do you have a quick?
Yeah, just a quick question. The Fire Protection and Prevention Act, which you've provided as dated 1997, have there been significant updates to that by?
So under the Fire Protections and Prevents Act, one of the things, they usually wait until, there are some, throughout the years, there are some addendums that are made. So you have to go online and check under E laws to see what the most current one is. That being said, that's the time that legislation was passed, when the whole document was reviewed. And within that, the fire code comes into play as well. So that's why it's referring to 1997. However, there have been some amendments throughout the act.
Okay, thank you. It's just a, it's a pretty short piece of legislation.
Well, that one, if you want to see the whole document, I provided the link for it. That's just municipal responsibility.
Okay. Thank you. I'm like, wow, that's pretty short.
No, 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 no.
Thank you. I understand now, that was kind of where I was getting at.
So through you, Mr. Chair, I'll just add, from Madam Mayor's information, rest of councils, that piece is just to show council what their responsibility is as the decision makers, and they're the ones, if a fire department is established, then you must provide these levels of services at minimum. So just one further piece that I will provide for council's information with respect to our training program. As I said, that's been ongoing. Last year, we received a grant from Enbridge. We purchased 50 IFST eight curriculums manuals that we're able to distribute to our members and part of our training program, also to comply with the legislation of the mandatory training that's coming out for 2026 by the province. And that you will find in some of the sections of regulations made from the act. The other part that we're looking at, and this is part of the building of the department, is the fire prevention inspection program. So the plan this summer is twice a month, we're going to go out and door-to-door and inspect smoke alarms at the residents. And we'll announce at the time, the members will have their uniforms. We have the ID cards so they can identify themselves. Anybody has any questions, they can call the office and get confirmation. And then the other part is to start reviewing not just our schools, which we do on a daily basis in the camps, but also start looking at some of our commercial buildings and multi-unit residential's within the municipality.
Thank you, Chief. Councillor?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I know also the master plan, there were suggestions that maybe council should consider other closures of North Monetteville and Levine and Burching, Levine and Burner. So going back to North Monetteville, would we, we, would we rely on the same existing agreements with French River, so nothing would change really? It's just that we may have to call on that agreement more often than we are now? And I'm just curious, at some point, I guess we'll, what I'd like to see is kind of data as to how many calls are responded to from, especially North Monetteville. And how would that affect the service, let's say, over a period of a year? Had the station been closed and had been responded to by a burged station between Burner and Levine? Or same for Burner and Levine, actually, because obviously if we close those two stations, it'll take more time to respond to Burner calls and a little bit more time to respond to Levine calls. So at some point, I guess if we're going to consider this, is that the kind of data we'll be able to see to make a decision?
Yes, so the preliminary conversations I had with the CEO of French River, with his counterpart, we're just doing that. But when that portion comes before council, all of that data for consideration would come into play. That automatic aid agreement would probably have to be reopened and revamped to accommodate a current reality. But, you know, there's obviously, we have to have a willing partner in French River to want to be able to assume that as well and not risk their residents as well. So though it's put in a report that would be in our best interest financially, there are still a lot of hurdles to jump. And then the main combination of Burner and Levine is just a conceptual one at this one in terms of consolidation with respect to where it would be located. It could create some issues in terms of response times, you know, both ways as you're indicating. So we would have to have a look at that and see whether the benefit would outweigh the cost. There's definite benefits in not just consolidating, having more units, having better training, more sophisticated equipment, and more opportunity for more people to respond. Because we have, what, nine fire stations? You know, we're often dispatching two or three just to get the minimum amount to be able to fight a fire. And in every dispatch, professional firefighters, so, you know, seem pretty much, right? First step, take care.
Oh, thank you.
But yeah, so that'll come, all of those recommendations are going to come up with the data before, you know, obviously, nothing is taken for granted. It's a kind of a best practice. And then even as I indicated when I presented, you know, that's cute at their age, but timelines might be a little aggressive as well, because there's potentially significant investment that would go, you know, go along with that. And this municipality has other large challenges to address as well. So this, this is something that is working right now. It isn't, it wouldn't be on our list to get done in the next few years because we are being looked after and we have challenges with water, burners, and so forth. So this would be a big one, too, right?
And if I may add, Mr. Chair, as the CEO would do, had mentioned there is logisticals that have to be looked at. And again, the recommendations on the timelines that they were looking at, does, it comes down to council's decision. So it's not something that has to be done immediately. Currently, we have a system that's working. It's something that we can take a look at down the road. And again, within the original report that was provided, there was some data as well provided as to the amount of calls that were being, per station, that was collected.
Thank you, Mr. Chief. So any comments or questions on the issue? Well, with this, I guess next meeting we'll be discussing the Tomico station. So if there's no more comments on this, back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councillor Larrabee. Moving on to section 5.2, Community Services Committee, I'll pass the floor to councillor Rorrie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'll pass it over to councillor Saint-Louis, if that's okay? If you'd like to speak to your agenda request item?
Yes, that's fine. Thank you. So through you, Mr. Chair. I put in this agenda request because as we've been trying for the past several years to do our budget early so that we can head to tenders early and so on and so forth. So this came up on, during our budget, had a special project, I believe it was called, don't quote me. And it was, came up at a close to $420,000 to have the basketball court and so on and so forth. The reason I'm bringing it up is I'm hoping to be able to probably basically save our municipality some money in the sense that I'm looking at, and I'm looking for council support at, hopefully, being able to go to tender, but for the basketball court only, right? And I get that other places have the fencing and the lighting and so on and so forth. But if eventually you move ahead and we remove the fencing at Goulart Park, well, that's a save of money that we can utilize and put that fencing there. So if we're able to get the basketball court and get the tenders out and be able to proceed with this for this summer, at the very least, the basketball courts and the asphalt surface for pickleball and so on can be there and ready to move forward. The cost obviously will be drastically less without the lighting and without the fencing infrastructure. And hopefully, we're able to save on the, like I said, on the fencing moving forward if we do continue to develop with the, with the Goulart Park portion of it, right? So that's what I'm asking is if we're able to support my recommendation to, at the very least, look at the asphalt portion or the basketball court portion of this project and defer the fencing and the lighting to a further, to a later time frame. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Saint-Louis. Just before, I'd like to see if I have anything to say, because I believe that special project would have been brought forward by itself. Do you have any comments on that idea?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I guess there, I have several thoughts. It would be a council decision to direct us to look at options and come back with some costing. Councillor Saint-Louis mentions an asphalt base. We generally would recommend building long-term through concrete. And the slab itself is what's very expensive. We have to do geotechnical, we have to make sure there's proper drainage, and then the slab has to be done according to specs. I can't tell council either way at this time if what's going to happen with the Goulart Park project. And I wouldn't know if that fence could easily be transferred to any other site. I guess anything's possible, but again, that would need to be council's direction. We had put that in the budget as a special project for council's consideration because it was requested. We got the data of anywhere between 350 and 450 for multi-use facilities because, and those are fairly accurate numbers, because North Bay and Sudbury have just built similar facilities. So no lights, no fencing, just a concrete slab. If it's council's wish for us to investigate something like that, we can. And then council would have to make the decision whether they want to fund that project this year prior to us even entertaining getting a design and going to tender for that. As council's aware, the community services capital budget is basically pending funding applications that we've got out. So until we get funding application notification, whether we're successful or not, we don't necessarily have the budget this year. So, but again, it's council's prerogative to decide where it wishes to put the capital funds. So, Mr. Chair, those are thoughts that I have. But we would look at direction from council on how you want to proceed with this request or project.
Thank you. Sorry, just to clarify, my apologies, I said asphalt, but I just meant the slab, whatever is best, sort of obviously by what the recommendation would be.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question was, is what would we be looking at as far as cost without the lights? And that does bring some other questions, because depending on the situation where it is, if you don't put the lights in place, sometimes it's harder for the equipment to go after and put those lights. And if it's concrete you're going to pour in there, well, you got to check at least three feet, four feet deep, make sure there's no clay. So there's a lot of prep also with this. So I don't, I don't think it would be, there is a cost to the lights, but like Monsieur Pouliet said, the concrete itself is where the cost is to this, to this project. I'm all for games, kids staying active at 150%. But first, I would like to know how the cost of, what it would cost without the lights and just your ask, and then we could move from there. That would be my, my ask on this. What's the cost?
Thank you, Councilor Larrabie. Would there be any other comments or questions?
Thank you. And if I may add, that's what I'm asking, right? I'm not saying I want it approved by no means. That's what I'm asking is, and I understand the work that needs to be implemented, whether it's the slab with the fence, with the lights, with the whole shebang, it'll be the same slab without. So that portion I get, and I understand the work that needs to be done prior to and the need, and all that stuff. So basically, my ask is if we're able to consider to do the same work that we are, we're planning on doing, however, less the fencing and the lighting, which is hopefully something that we can do in the future. Basically, what I'm asking is if the possibility is there to be able to move forward and try to get this done earlier rather than later. Going back to the, the community service budget and so on, I understand that. But I also know that we've been talking about it since the beginning. We have the other area, call it what you will, where there is money there that we have dedicated for special project. So I feel that that money, a portion of that can be utilized for this to help and not to affect the community service budget. That's what I'm getting at. Thank you.
Thank you for the added information.
I don't, through you, Mr. Chair, what money are you talking about? Do you mean the sale of assets fund?
Correct.
Okay. Not for special projects, but for consolidation of our assets and to help repair. So yes, that is available, and it's certainly council's choice to use that fund the way council sees it. I'd be remiss if I didn't speak as, you know, procedurally with respect to we, we go through a budget process. The budget process is your key strategic document financially that tells staff where they're going to be putting their resources, tendering out and that, and their work plans are based on that. So if you want to take something in addition to that, unless you're willing to use that source, certainly what we presented is there's no other money available unless you're going to take it from the general reserve or if you want to use that reserve. And I'm not suggesting that you don't, but I would be suggesting that you take all of your needs from infrastructure and determine what priorities are prior to making an ad hoc or a one-off decision. You could have a $2 million fix in Burner, you could have a new building in Burner to fix, you know, to compensate the fix. So there's a lot of needs that we're trying to build those funds for. My recommendation, the staff recommendation, would not be to take these one-ups that way because that's not real good long-term financial planning. So it's, I just wanted to pass that along. And if so, if the decision, if you want us to come back to you with respect to asking our engineers or consultants what the elimination would be of everything else and just start with a concrete slab and what their calculation was, we can bring that to you at a future meeting to tell you what the difference would be. And then council could decide at that point whether they have, they want to spend some money, you know, in whatever fund they have right now towards that end. So we, I think that could be an easy call because in the calculations, there would have been, there would have been, the individual items would have been costed out to give you that total so we can probably get that number and then bring that back to a future council meeting.
Sure.
Thank you. Yes, I agree with this without having a consultant cost. So it would cost anything?
No, through you, Mr. Chair, there is a report that told us, a costing report that told us. So that person would be phoned, and unless we have the data already, it's just not with us, that person would say, okay, in your assumption, this is part of it.
Good idea.
Counselor Nickel?
Thank you. I would be interested in hearing what the other costs would be with the other things taken away because Mr. St. Louis has been advocating for this for about a year now. So I think it's only fair to get those numbers and then we can decide from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have your hand up, Counselor Russell? You're disappointed. So I just like, yeah, I guess I'm wondering too if it's just basketball. Like I'm, I'm thinking of Northern Secondary School building. It's not a concrete slab, it's pavement. Now, would that be much cheaper as well? Like, would we be able to get a price for something of that, that scale as well, just kind of a slab of pavement, almost like a driveway, but it has two nets on each side? That seemed, it would be much more efficient. Cost-wise, it wouldn't be this multi-use facility because I also believe that council, we did already speak before about kind of, you know, Goulard Park being a community services priority. We've got the Burner building, there's a few other things. So it's kind of, I don't really know if this was a location, like even in our Wreck and Culture Committee about investing a $500,000 type of facility at Cash Bay while we're trying to redo Goulard Park as well or do these other things, right? It was the idea of consolidating, so I'm not too sure on that end, but something along the lines of a paved slab with some nets, it doesn't seem as grandiose to me. But, and I also just wish that, yeah, we had spoke about this at budget because how budget's done in a way, and it was a special project, so it wasn't calculated in our fund. So that, in my opinion, if it is something a little bit bigger, it would be for 2026, like we would do our, looking into it now, and then hopefully have it in the budget for the 2026. I'm dealing with it at work as well, but I asked for something, he's like, well, you asked a month later because now we don't have the money, right? We budgeted for, for these projects. And now, in order to get this project, then it may have to wait until the next, the next annual budget. But I like the idea, and I wouldn't mind seeing as well that those two costs, like just a slab, a concrete slab with the nets and a paved slab is, I don't know if it has to be full-on concrete for basketball. But just by a show of hands, I guess, who would?
Sorry. If I may, just keep in mind, some of it also, the information that we did receive was to be able to have the pickleball also, right? So I don't know if that makes a difference, if it's concrete or whatever it is, but it's just that, add that also, that option.
Yeah, I believe like that multi-use was more for the Goulard with the pickleball tennis, right? You had the lights, the fence, the basketball. So if this is just strictly basketball, I'd be interested to see something much simpler. It's almost like building a parking lot with two nets. I don't know. So, Councilor Larrabie?
Thank you. Une question pour Monsieur Poudin. Just pourquoi que c'était dans l'idée de juste mettre du cimajj, mais même qu'il y a une bonne raison, mais que ça va durer forever à compared à l'asphalte?
C'est parce que on avait été demandé de faire l'analyse puis en même temps on avait eu le concert vers Sud de Monde du groupe de pickleball de Nippesing West. Alors, on a conçu, on a regardé nos voisins aussi qui ont fait des projets similaires la dernière année ou deux. Et puis, on est revenu avec une proposition des cours attachés à un site qui serait utilisé pour du basket et pour pickleball pour essayer de rencontrer les demandes de nos résidents le plus possible. Et puis, c'est le modèle qu'on ne suit, c'est ce qu'on a présenté au conseil.
Okay, see. See. Madam Mayor?
Thank you very much. Through you, Mr. Chair. As many frustration really lies in when we look at the costing on a lot of these recreation projects, it's just so much. You know, when you, when you look at, we're just trying to provide simple opportunities for recreation and, you know, you start looking at $400,000 for, for a simple basketball court, it gets to be really discouraging because I think all of us would like to see us be able to create these opportunities in the community. At some of the conferences that we've attended in the different trade shows, and I think I shared, you know, some of these products, you know, with either Counselor Revard in his role as Community Services Chair or Counselor St. Louis, you know, you'll see some of these, you know, mats that click together. And I often think like it would be really great if there was a way that we could reuse or further use some of our existing facilities like the outdoor rinks. If there's, if there are kind of newer, innovative, more cost-effective solutions available that take advantage of infrastructure that's already in place. And I would, I don't know whether any of those solutions would be applicable to what we have or what we can do. But, you know, and the same with, as Counselor Revard said, you know, do we need to have the Cadillac concrete? Or can we provide a simpler opportunity with really, you know, an asphalt pad with some lines painted and some nets? Because, you know, we're not, we're not grooming an NBA team here, we're just trying to give kids in Cash Bay a place to play basketball. So, you know, I would like to see if there are any other options because even when you look at our outdoor rinks, I mean, this year we spent 300 and change, is that correct, on the Cash Bay rink?
Two and change.
Two and change on the Cash Bay rink. And, you know, the facility's going to be used from January 1st to March 15th. And then what do we do with this compacted gravel square? It's beautiful, the contractors did a wonderful job, but it doesn't serve the community very well for nine and a half months of the year. Ten, nine and a half, sorry, I was doing nine and a half months of the year. So it'd be interesting to look at solutions like that. But I just, I just find it, you know, frustrating when we pay $200,000 for a simple outdoor rink when we're looking at $400,000 for, for a basketball court. It gets pretty discouraging because it really limits what we can do within what is a reasonable cost for our taxpayers to bear. And that's, those are my comments on the subject. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Larrabie. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Consul gagné à la Sainte Merde. Back to Consul Larrabie. Thank you. Sorry, but, no, two years ago, we built the rink at River Valley for $45,000, and now we're looking at 200,000. It's unbelievable. The thing is, asphalt at the base of the rink would be great. You could hang the baskets out there. The thing is, is the prep needs to be done because asphalt will, will go with the terrain. So if you have frost, if you got clay, clay raises up, you're going to have uneven, and that's what we experienced in River Valley. You needed about a foot of water at one end just to cover the other end because of the, you know, so you have to have the preparation of the soil, you know, really, you can't skip on that. But that would, that would be an idea to, as long as the contractor did a good job for the base, you could put asphalt on, at the base of the, of the rink. So maybe, maybe we could have a price on that because I know concrete, if the base is not right, concrete will break, and then, then you're going to have liability because concrete shifts. Asphalt doesn't do that. Asphalt, it just molds with it. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Has the Youth Advisory and Wreck Advisory Committee been consulted on the need of basketball courts? And was there a request that was made by them?
Thank you. So the committee itself, like we did discuss basketball courts, but we ended up, as a committee, it was kind of, the main recommendation was park kind of a one stop. There were some comments made though, I remember Consul St. Louis mentioned, you know, maybe a basketball court or something in Cash Bay and, I believe.
If I may, during our meeting? Not done, Mr. Chair. Okay, thank you. And is there any other areas that would maybe benefit having a basketball court besides just Cash Bay? Because I'd like to look at potentially every area if there is a need or a request, I think might come through the Youth Advisory or the Wreck Committee. So I'd just like to make that call. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
So finally, during our Youth Advisory Committee or Wreck Committee, it was brought up and we did talk a lot about the new, the Goulard Park project and so on. However, individuals did make comments and make suggestions that we also need to think of our other municipalities and not just Sturgeon and focus just on Sturgeon. Yes, the Goulard Park project will be fantastic for the municipality, not just for Sturgeon Falls, for the whole municipality, but we can't forget the other areas. And we did talk about who has access to play basketball in other communities, not solely basketball court specific, but who has access to play basketball, it was discussed, yes.
Thank you. I'll see.
So sensing some of the comments in the room, I'll work with the director and the facility or the infrastructure, the project manager will speak to the person who gave us the design, get some options and bring some combinations back to council to have a discussion or have a look at where we're going. So, you know, there are, there are some points here, you know, that we want to consider as well. Because I do personally, and I'm not a civil engineer or anything, but I do know that if you have drainage issues on concrete, it becomes a, it becomes a real problem. So we'll have a look at that, we'll bring, we'll bring some options back, and then it'll be up to council to decide if you want to do a major change to the budget.
Thank you. How about come out, Madam Mayor?
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to Section 6, our regular meeting, and we'll begin 6.1, our consent agenda, please.
It is moved by Counsel Gagne and seconded by Counsel Palery. Be it resolved that the consent agenda for the council and committee of Hope on January the 23rd, 2025 be approved as presented.
Questions or comments on consent agenda? Okay, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, 6.2, planning, we have one minute.
It is moved by Counsel Palery and seconded by Counsel Gagne. Be it resolved that Bylaw Number 2025-10, being a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw 2014-45, to rezone certain lands located at 202 Highway 539A from Residential 1 to Highway Commercial Exception Zone 3, shall come into force and take effect on the day it is passed.
Okay, questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? It's Carrie, thank you. Sorry, Madam Clerk. We have no correspondence, no unfinished business, we'll move on to 6.5, new business, 6.5.1.
It is moved by Counsel Gagne and seconded by Counsel Palery. Whereas at the meeting of council held on January the 7th and January 23rd, deliberations were held to discuss the expenditure estimates for the water and wastewater for the year 2025. Be it resolved that council, for the cooperation of the municipality of West Nippesing, approves the expenditure estimates for the water and wastewater department attached to Schedule A for the year 2025.
Okay, questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? Carrie?
It is moved by Counsel Revard and seconded by Counsel Gagne. Be it resolved that Bylaw Number 2025-05, being a bylaw of the West Nippesing municipality, to set the water and wastewater rates for 2025 for the municipality of West Nippesing, shall come into force and take effect on the day of the pass.
Questions or comments? All of us in favor?
Madam Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I got it.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Palery.
I'm just wondering, what's the difference from last year?
I think we came up with that and apologized, but I believe per household at the highest rate is about $80.
That's for both water and sewer?
Water and sewer, yeah.
Another question. First dwelling, and then additional dwelling. What are we talking about exactly?
So through you, Madam Mayor, and it's something that's been going on except for the cost, we don't have everything metered here. And so back early on in the start of the municipality, the council of the day determined a formula that for residential, not just multi-res, but if you had, like, let's say you own a threeplex and you owned it yourself, that it would be. you own a threeplex, and you owned it yourself, that it would be two apartments attached to it. First one would be one, and the other two would only be point five, which would be the assumption that it wouldn't be as vague and using as much water. So that's basically how it works when there's like an apartment building. They would be assessed at one, and then every other apartment build, every other apartment in that building would be point five of the total rate.
So it wouldn't matter if it's a one bedroom or a two bedroom, it's all classified as the same?
Yes. Yeah, so, you know, and, and you can classify that if you want, you know, and that could be a whole discussion on equity in a report, which this council would probably want to have. But, you know, the same goes for two people living in a home versus a family of five, right? So there's, obviously, you know, we're, there's inequities in the system with respect to that. So we're charging dwellings and not actual usage. In terms of savings to the public, the, the only savings you would have in terms of conservation would be, in our cost, would be really the cost of the chemicals. Because the water we take is free from the river and it goes through the system. So it's really treating the water. So there's less treatment that would be taken, but it wouldn't be really material. The big part of the cost of running sewer and water are the, running the plants, the hydro and fixing the pipes and making sure, having the staff go around, making sure that everybody's drinking safe and clean water, right? So, but it is an equity issue and a fairness issue.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. It's not, it's not about the savings, it's about the fairness.
Yeah.
And was there ever discussions in the previous council about metering? Because I know, was it last year, the inform, Mr. May, we mentioned it would possibly be high for the meters, and apparently he said that they're down from years ago. It would be, it wouldn't be very costly to reduce, which would be fair across the board.
To you, Madam Mayor, the, I'm being myself here, but I don't mention the name, but it was, and the manager, Potter Wastewater, she's retired now for at least ten years, but we were looking at bringing that up, and there were significant costs, and it would be how to finance or whether we put it on. Eventually, it is the users who have to end up paying for those costs in any event. So whether we charge them or whether we put it on them and charge them, you know, whatever, right? So, but if council so directs us to start an analysis on looking at what it would cost and at least start sectioning off and maybe doing it over time, it is the more appropriate way of, of billing, for sure.
Can we do this in-house without having to go to another consultant?
I can't say yes or no, other than we've been in-house before. We can certainly get the information by, with internal staff, by calling suppliers or meters and looking at our neighbors and finding out what they're, they've been doing and getting that information, those suppliers, and then having a look at that. But certainly, we can do a lot of the pre, the, the pre-work in-house, but I can't, you know, comment. It's really, part of the reasons why we would get external resources to do things is to actually get it done in some, in some circumstances, because our resources are dedicated towards actually delivering the service, and so we don't have as much as people would think the people that, you know, are there doing these analyses. But this one doesn't seem to be that, that strong, and we may have data. The other reason is if it were too complicated, we would then get an external consultant. But in this case, again, I don't know. So it would appear that we can get some preliminary data in-house and bring it to, back to council for consideration either this year or in next year, if it's a massive budgetary issue, and it would be a massive budgetary issue despite it coming down quite a bit. You have about eight thousand residences now, none of them are metered. There's only some commercial residences that are metered, or commercial enterprises such as the O Chateau and the hospital are metered, so.
Okay, thank you.
May I just, I guess I don't need my own permission to speak. Thank you very much, Council Pelerin, because those are great points. And I think during our budget process, Ms. Kradic also mentioned about our meter institutional users and whether there was some need for change in the way that those are done, and then looking at other institutional users that are not currently metered that maybe have users. So, you know, I, I think when we look at the system of billing here, when it's based solely on per house and everybody pays the same, whether equity is looking at square footage, whether equity is looking at fixture units like they do for subject capacity or something like that, there is a certain inequity built in to the system here. And I think that there's probably also the potential that there are houses on the system that have additional dwelling units that we're not aware of and could only be being built. So there's, there are likely a lot of places where the billing for water and sewer could be more efficient, and I would definitely be in favor of kind of, you know, while we go into our next budget period, taking a look at some of those issues and seeing whether we can make some fixes to the system to make it a little bit more fair, a little bit more even, and give some of our, you know, street residential users a bit of a break as well.
So at the next meeting, we will put a resolution on the floor, directing staff to come back and bring back a report exploring options for council to consider. And you raised some good points that perhaps maybe might be some hybrid version of looking at size of, size of building or number of bedrooms or what have you. So we can bring back a few of those options and get that back to council.
Great. Any other points, Council Pelerin?
Without having a consultant.
My sense is that Mr. Pelerin doesn't want us to use consultants.
Doesn't like consultants, yes. Okay, any other questions or comments before we vote on the motion on the floor? Okay, would, would you read the motion again, Madam Clerk, sorry?
It is moved by Council Rebar and seconded by Council Gagne. Be it resolved that bylaw number twenty-twenty-five-zero-five, being a bylaw of the West Nipissing municipality, set the water and wastewater rates for two thousand twenty-five for the West Nipissing municipality, shall come into force and take effect on the day it is passed.
Okay, all in favor? That's Carrie, thank you. Next item on the agenda, fire protection grant, Madam Clerk.
It is moved by Council Gagne and seconded by Council Rebar, Council Gagne and seconded by Council Rebar. Be it resolved that council for the West Nipissing municipality hereby authorizes the execution of the transfer payment agreement for the fire protection grant with the Minister of Solicitor General.
Okay. Anything we need to know about this particular motion, Mr. Valo?
Nothing, then, what was provided?
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie, thank you.
It is moved by Council Rebar and seconded by Council Gagne. Be it resolved that bylaw number twenty-twenty-five-zero-six, being a bylaw of the West Nipissing municipality, to establish a community safety zone in the municipality of West Nipissing, shall come into force and take effect on the day it is passed.
Okay, questions or comments? Council Pelerin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to raise one point, and I'm sorry I didn't raise this when we discussed the committee, but I suppose I was so excited about the fact that staff had come back so quickly with the proposal, I kind of missed it. But when I looked at it this week, and I went for a little drive on Principal in Verner, and the zone starts at Deserade, which is almost where the school is. There's no stop sign there. And I, I'm thinking that maybe we should start at Highway sixty-four. There's the park, the Plancaville Park, just behind the municipal building. So it's just one or two blocks earlier, and have the section from Highway sixty-four to the school, rather than just the block where the school is.
What about to the other side of the arena?
I think it stops, the principal stops at Telestore, where the zone stops now. So I think it does cover the area. But, and I think, you know, starting at the highway would give it that visibility from the highway, you know, people driving, they'll see it.
Yes.
So I, I would just like to propose a motion to amend on Schedule A, Deserade to Highway sixty-four.
Okay, I'd just like to have Ms. Hennig respond.
So through you, my only concern, so you would want the sign on the highway?
No, the sign would be on Principal, but it would, you just, as, as you turn into, from the highway into Principal, then you will see the sign. It's not on the highway.
Okay, so in all other locations, including this one, we put them where the existing school zones are, which was the reasoning for that. If council wishes to extend the one in Verner to there, I, I don't think there's any real harm in that. But there is, kind of the further away from the schools they are, the more opportunity that people see the sign and forget about it, or that's why we kept them close to the existing school zone signs. But if, if council wants them further away, then that's fine.
So did you want to put that motion to amend on the floor, then?
If you want to let others comment first.
Okay, Council Pelerin?
I, I see.
Okay, we do need the motion to amend, and this is here. Okay, can I get a seconder on the motion to amend, please? Council Pelerin?
Yeah, talk about it.
Okay, Council Pelerin, please, we just proceed.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, Mr. Pelerin. Because if you remember back, when I proposed the four-way stop at Highway sixty-four, I did add quite a few complaints on that street, even though they were, just start from Highway sixty-four to the next block, and there's a stop sign, and for some reason, some, the traffic is, is nuts, and it's right in front of the, the new splash park. So yes, I would be very in favor of, from sixty-four all the way past the arena, then to Deserade. Good idea.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the amendment, please? Okay, so there's a motion to amend on the floor, and the amendment would be to start the community safety zone just after the corner of Highway sixty-four on Principal. So show of hands, all in favor of the amendment? That's carried, and then back to the original motion, which is to establish the community safety zones as under the bylaw. Other questions or comments on passing the bylaw itself? Seeing none, all in favor?
It is moved by Council Gagne and seconded by Council Rebar. Whereas council has received a request from staff to submit a funding application supporting seniors' active living centers program, be it resolved that council for the West Nipissing municipality authorizes staff to submit a funding application to the Ministry for Seniors and Accessibility for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six senior active living centers program to support the River Valley Golden Age Club. And be it further resolved that the municipality of West Nipissing agrees to commit the required twenty percent, five thousand or cash in kind contribution to meet the funding formula.
Okay, questions or comments? Okay.
Sorry, just in regards to the application, we're currently funding the, the River Valley Golden Age Club financially. If they do get this grant application, does that mean we will only supply the top-up that we need to let they get that application, and they'll use that money to self-sufficient their, their application, or?
Well, that would obviously be a council decision to agree upon. The background of the River Valley funding was, you know, probably a couple of terms in play, and I guess the reason why this council or previous councils, I think it was this council, agreed to fund River Valley is because we have no other assets there, and we use those assets such as the municipal ones. And so it's very much like living in that sense, is we don't have a facility or a hall in living, and, you know, so we, so these centers, you know, I'm not defending, I'm just explaining the rationale why you did it. These centers have volunteers that are on the board and volunteers that provide programming. Without insulting any of the volunteers, but, you know, they're, like any volunteer, they, they don't get younger, and so it's harder to raise funds and to generate the income. So that's why we were providing that top-up to a system with some of their baseline cost. What I would suggest with this fund, however, that, and this would be for other programming and other things that they can do, and they do have other capital that they do, I would suggest that our portion could be included as part of what we already give them, so we would have the top-up. That's what I would be aiming for, that part of our contribution would be considered the five thousand top-up.
Thank you, Mr. Backwood, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? Carrie, thank you.
It is moved by Council Rebar and seconded by Council Gagne. Be it resolved that bylaw number twenty-twenty-five-zero-seven, being a bylaw of the West Nipissing municipality, to execute a land acquisition, to execute an agreement with Plaid and Ivar Robisho for the acquisition of the traveled portions of Robisho and Perrin Roads, shall come into force and take effect on the day it is passed.
Is there a cost to the opposite?
Other than the, through you, Madam Chair, the, you'll recall, council discussed this back in the late, early fall, I think of last year, where the municipality agreed to pick up the, the cost, the associated cost, the survey and the legal fees of Mr. and Mrs. Robisho.
Okay. Other questions or comments? All in favor? That is carried, thank you.
It is moved by Council Gagne and seconded by Council Rebar. Be it resolved that bylaw number twenty-twenty-five-zero-eight, being a bylaw of the West Nipissing municipality, to recognize and dedicate a portion of, to recognize and dedicate that public roads known as Perrin Road and Robisho Road for public road purposes shall come into force and take effect on the day it is passed.
Okay, questions, comments? All in favor? Carrie, thank you.
It is moved by Council Rebar and seconded by Council Gagne. Be it resolved that the property lying, the property lying south of number three, Palquette Street in Verner, legally described as part of Lot fifty-seven, Plan M twenty-one, being Part One, Plan Thirty-Six R one five three three three, be declared surplus and that staff be directed to proceed to dispose of the property to Diantelier for the consideration of fourteen thousand four hundred dollars plus HST in accordance with the municipal bylaw twenty-twenty-one eighteen.
Okay, questions or comments? Council Pelerin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Those fees are fourteen thousand plus, who paid for the survey?
Diantelier will pay.
Will pay.
It's included on top of the...
On top of the fourteen thousand.
Yep.
Okay, how big is the?
Thirty by sixty-six.
Okay, sixty-six feet wide?
Thirty feet deep.
Thirty. I just want to keep that in mind when we come back to the, the Mer Street and for the price. I think, I think it's fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? All in favor? That is Carrie, thank you.
It is moved by Council Airby and seconded by Council St. Louis. Whereas a request for quotations were sought for the granular resurfacing projects, and whereas five quotations were received, and whereas council concurs with the recommendations, be it resolved that the quotations for the granular resurfacing, resurfacing projects are awarded as follows. Ed Siggen and Sons for Clatien Road, fifty-two thousand nine hundred forty dollars seventy-two cents. French River Contracting for De... French River Contracting for Dokeese Road, $217,700. And La Belle Brothers Excavating for Stewart Road, $63,787.50.
Can you just explain the Stewart optional column on the papers in the package? So we put this separately because this is the section of Stewart Road between Highway 64 and, I believe that's closed during the wintertime.
Yes.
We did some brushing and ditching there last year, have determined that the road is built on a swamp. It's in absolutely dreadful condition. So this is the price just for granular. But in addition to granular, we would also need to, like we put some sort of geogrid down so that we don't lose all of the granular into the swamp there. There's no homes on that road. I believe it is potentially used for farmers cutting through. However, so we put this kind of as an optional for granular. At this time, I don't, I don't know the price to do the geogrid on top of that. But it would be probably a substantial amount to bring this road to a condition where we can actually be maintaining it. So that's something that I think council's going to have to look at in the future of where we want to go with this section of road.
Okay, and that, the pricing that was given in that column is only for the section between LeBlanc and?
Highway 64.
Highway 64?
Yes.
It's not an add-on?
Right now it's closed for the winter, that section.
Thank you. Okay, so you're not recommending doing anything with that, that part of the project at this time?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Pedern?
Thank you. I'm just curious, how does that compare to budgeting?
Yep, we're actually under budget on all three of those.
By how much?
So for Cretien Road, our budget was $58,000 or, what was it, $58,000? For Dokeese Road, we had $250,000 budgeted. And for Stewart Road, we had budgeted $103,000. So, and that would have been for both portions. So that's another reason we're looking at only doing the one portion of Stewart Road.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Pedern?
So you could actually have enough to pave Sylvester Street in Werner?
Let's wait and see how everything else comes in first. Or build a basketball court.
Oh, you have an actual question? Counselor Pedern?
What's geo, how did you?
Geogrid, so it's, it's like a plastic membrane. There's like kind of little squares, looks like a grid that goes down on top of your base and then you put your granulars on top of that and it prevents the granulars from going through. So similar to like a geotextile product that you would use, you know, to stop, like sturdier than what you'd use to stop weeds from coming out through your garden, but like something like that that you put down. So there's different, there's different types of it, but it's a.
Okay, I, I just had, I went on that road last summer a few times and, what you mean? With a good layer of just pit run, which would be a lot cheaper, would it be a base for, no?
No, whatever we put down there, we're gonna lose. It's a swamp. It's a swamp.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a resolution. Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Larabee?
How thick would we put on this texture, textile? If we were to?
If we were to put?
What would you suggest, four, six inches?
We would probably do like to start six inches of A, yeah.
Thank you.
It's, we actually did use a geogrid system, I believe, on, this is before my time, but I believe it was used on Golf Course Road with some success. It's a little bit more travel road than this road is, so.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, resolution on the floor, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you.
It is moved by Counsel St. Louis and seconded by Counsel Larabee. Whereas requests for quotations were sought for roadside grass cutting, and whereas two quotations were received, and whereas council concurs with the recommendation, be it resolved that the quotation for roadside grass cutting be awarded to TMI Brushing, being the lowest quotation, needing all specifications for the following four-year amounts. 2025, $17,000. 2026, $17,340. 2027, $17,890. And 2028, $18,396.
Thank you. Questions? So Counsel Pedern?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last few years, I've heard a lot of complaints about this. And I'm not talking just about the last contractor, I'm talking way before that. It used to be, you put out the contract, everybody would use a sickle mower. It's got a seven-foot blade and there wouldn't be a branch standing in the first seven feet. You go around quite a few roads, Picket Road where we are, lots of road. There's branches two feet from the road. What happened? The contract was given out to the machine that they couldn't cut a branch. Just for the grass. But eventually, a little branch will grow and you can't cut it. The next year, it's bigger, it's bigger. And then even if you get the right contractor, with the right machine, the branch is getting too big, you can't cut it. So what's the criteria right now for the, for that contract?
I believe it's the same criteria that we've had in past years, because what you're describing kind of gets into brushing territory. So we're cutting those larger, that larger stuff in our brushing and ditching. I'd have to review the tender to see exactly what.
I know, it's hard to enforce.
What the machine criteria is.
I know it's hard to enforce now because we've lost some roads, parts of some roads. I, I don't know what the, the fix would be there, but how can you enforce? You know what I mean?
Yeah, and, and it would potentially come at a higher cost, too.
Thank you.
Counselarabee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I totally agree with this. It, like I said, it's a small branch. First thing you know is go big to the point where it no longer be able to cut. And it changed classification to ditching. Because they have to go in there with heavy equipment and ditch because the branches are too big. But if we have some policy saying that you have to use a machine to cut the smaller branches, because some will just bypass the branches completely, I've seen that. So if we, if we were to try to put something together saying that that machine's got to be a certain size to cut those branches, then it would not go.
You have a legal tender here, so I'd suggest that if we're going to be changing the service level, that we can bring that back to council and discuss that. I have been here a long time, too, and there are reasons why about availability of certain machinery that has changed. Some of the suppliers no longer bid. They had great material and I know who it was from the Werner area back in the day, and yes. So there are some reasons operationally why things have changed. But at this point, these were the specs that were put out and, you know, this is the bid that we have. And I think staff will have a look at and have a discussion about what was said today and have regard for that with respect to what we can do this year and in future years to maybe make an adjustment before we tender out. We can come with another process and have a look at it. But as long as council is aware that that'll come with a cost as well. Maybe an additional cost on the short run, but saving roads on the long run. So, but that, that will be a good strategic discussion. What you have before you is a tender.
Thank you.
Okay, and both bids did need all the specifications laid out in the, in the tender that was deemed operationally appropriate by staff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, question? Are they cutting the grass on all of our roads?
Um, all the roads that grass grows on the side, so you wouldn't see them here in town, but on, like all of our rural roads, yes.
That's a lot of kilometers.
Yes. That'd be good.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
400 kilometers that they cut.
Yeah.
Counsel Pedern?
Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor. I have the same question, cost.
Yeah, we're actually under budget this year. So we're about $10,000 less than we were anticipating.
In total, for each year?
Yes.
Well, for this year.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I will just ask one question. Why is it that with this tender, it's a multi-year contract? Because we don't often see that. It's usually tendered each and every year, like when you look at.
Well, a lot of our smaller operations like this, we do tender multi-year. Like our line painting is multi-year, our sweeping is multi-years. So things that are kind of simple like this, we tend to do multi-year.
Thank you. Anybody else? Counsel Pedern?
Just for information purpose, multi-year, four years like this, it gives a contractor that's maybe not in the business, go buy the mower and apply spread for four years. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, resolution on the floor, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you.
It is moved by Counsel Larabee and seconded by Counsel St. Louis. Whereas at the meeting of January the 7th, 2025, Council for the West Nipissing Municipality considered an appraisal report. And whereas council recommended that the land situated between Demer Street and Riverfront Drive, being more particularly described as part of Lot 5, Concession A, be declared surplus to the Municipality of West Nipissing. And whereas council further discussed certain lot additions to abutting landowners on Riverfront Drive, be it resolved that the property described as part of Lot 5, Concession A, being pin number 490850281, is declared surplus. And be it further resolved that the municipal clerk be authorized to obtain a reference plan, a survey, and to execute agreement of purchase, agreements of purchase and sale for the lot addition sales to the Riverfront Drive property owners based on the appraised value of the property and in accordance with bylaw number 2021-18.
Okay, questions, comments? Okay, all in favor? That's carried, thank you. We'll move on to Section 8, the addendum.
It is moved by Counsel Pedern and seconded by Counsel Larabee. Whereas the Director of Community Services provided council with information concerning a funding opportunity for the Ontario Trillium Foundation Capital Grant Stream to assist with the replacement of the Werner Arena Chiller. Be it resolved that council authorizes the Director of Community Services to submit an application to the Ontario Trillium Fund Capital Grant Stream for the replacement of the Werner Arena Chiller.
Questions or comments? Counsel Pedern?
Just, I remember that was in the book, right? The, what's, what's the chiller do exactly?
It allows the ice plant to function, essentially, yeah.
Okay, and is it, is it, yeah, but right now?
Beyond its life expectancy and we're, we need to change it sooner than later.
Okay, so it's not that one?
Nope, no, 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 no.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Resolution on the floor, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you.
It is moved by Counsel Larabee and seconded by Counsel Pedern. It resulted bylaw number 2025-12 being a bylaw of the Municipality of West Nipissing to approve a red line amendment to the draft plan of subdivision, number SUBD 202401, for Dwight and Heather Friar, shall come into force and take effect on the day it is passed.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie?
It is moved by Counsel St. Louis and seconded by Counsel Larabee. Whereas council has received a request from West Nipissing Casa Development Inc. seeking a variation in the required percentage of contingency fees to be withheld by the municipality for the completion of the above and below ground services for subdivision file number SUB 2021-03. Be it resolved that council authorizes the reduction in the percentage of contingency fees to be withheld from the required 20% to 6% for Casa, for West Nipissing Casa Development for subdivision file number SUB 2021-03.
Okay, questions or comments? Okay, Counsel Gagne?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I noticed in the report here that it was allowed in this pass, but is that the recommendation being brought forward that by our planner here?
Carrie, Madam Mayor, yes, it is. The applicant has hired an engineer consultant who is prepared a breakdown of all the costs throughout the project. And that was based on a 6% contingency. And they're wishing to carry forward with that as the engineer has requested. And I, as well as other staff, have looked at that request and do you think a 6% is a reasonable number?
Okay, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Pedern?
Could you, I, I just, I just got it tonight, so could you explain this process a little bit more? What, what does it entail?
Yes, through you, Mr. Madam Mayor. Once the developer enters into the subdivision agreement, they provide us with a letter of credit for securities for all the above and below ground works that are still outstanding, that they've yet to complete. Once they do complete those works, that security is given back to them, so that's not a revenue stream for us. And it, the subdivision policy that we have is that whatever the amount of work still to be done, we take an additional 20% as contingency. And the request here is just to reduce that to 6%.
Okay, other?
Counsel St. Louis, Madam Mayor, just quick, so what subdivision, where are we talking about? Where is this?
This is the fourth and fifth phase of the Casa subdivision. So across from Cameron Court, down King Street.
Okay.
Anybody else? Counsel Pedern?
Very curiously, so that 20% is given back to the contractor when?
Once there is final acceptance granted, so once engineering, our public works department looks over the works and deems them satisfactory to the municipality for us to assume responsibility for them.
So once the whole thing is done? Usually on those, is there like a guarantee of one year or five years on the work?
Madam Mayor, there is a guarantee when it comes to the paving. I believe the subdivision agreement is one year. We wait the one year or two years, depending on what the servicing is. Make sure that it's satisfactory before we issue that final approval and we'll assume it.
So the 20% doesn't include that period? It's, it's given back once you get the go-in, right?
Yes, that is given back with the remainder of their securities once everything's deemed to be acceptable for us to assume.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel next to?
Through you, Madam Mayor, I wasn't gonna ask, but I'm just curious. Obviously, we have a policy that says 20%. The 6% was something that was agreed to prior to the vast majority of us. I don't know if it's relevant, but the reason was to drop to 6. Question, is, is 20% still relevant or is that something we should look at in terms of reviewing? And I'll just finish before you, Mr. CEO. I understand the importance of housing and the challenges we have. And if we can make it more accessible to increase our housing stock within the municipality, that's certainly important. But I'm just looking for a little bit of that.
So certainly we can bring the policy back for discussion. I don't have an opinion whether 20% is still relevant or not. I think that the 20% is in the absence of any concrete information. You know, where the municipality is protected. And so the contingency fee is not the total cost, it's the, you know, it's what we would think could be plus or minus kind of thing, so here on the plus. In this case, for the 6%, what I believe Ms. Willett is indicating with staff is that they receive more concrete information and they feel comfortable that the contingency fee of 6% is satisfactory, given what has been costed out and, you know, what is yet to be done. So the reduction now is basically because they feel comfortable that they can handle 6% and that that wouldn't put the municipality at risk of getting that right.
That is correct, yes. If it provides a little bit more information, that 6% is looking to be around a $50,000 buffer. So it's not, there is a good amount of wiggle room should something happen with that.
Thank you.
But to your point, if we want to bring it back, I'll have a conversation. But to your point, if, if we want to bring it back, I'll have a conversation with staff to see if the twenty percent is still relevant and is still, we, we want to be looking and being pro-development. And so, you know, we want to not be necessarily, uh, worse than some other, uh, you know, than other places where they develop. And so we want to make sure that we're developer-friendly. So we'll have a look at that and bring that back.
Okay.
Thank you. Councillor Larrabee?
Last question. The six percent or the twenty percent is based on which number?
That is based on the amount of works above ground and below ground that are remaining. So, for example, they've put the granular B down on the roads, uh, and most of the granular A, but they haven't done the paving yet, so we're basing that on the paving that's still to do, not on the entire project and everything that's been conduct, constructed already. Anything that they still haven't finalized up to our standards, you take that and then add a six percent on top of it.
Carrie, thank you.
Carrie. Okay, anybody else? Okay, resolutions on the table. All those in favor? That's Carrie, thank you. I, I'll just intervene. It is eight o'clock now, which is our usual, uh, time for a, uh, brief recess. Um, I would propose that we finish the rest of the regular agenda with just a couple items left, and then take a, a brief break before we proceed into a closed session with council's approval. I see nods around the table. Thank you.
It is moved by councillor Larrabee and seconded by councillor Fetter. Whereas the Canadian Centre on Substance Abuse, Substance Use and Addiction has established a municipal leaders table to seek solutions to the substance use and toxic drug crisis in Canada. And whereas the mayor of the municipality of West Nipissing has been invited to represent the municipality at the municipal leaders table at a meeting to be held on April the fourteenth to sixteenth in Lethbridge, Alberta. And whereas policy number one nine 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 dash one thirty-one, as amended, requires council authorization for out-of-pro, out-of-providence travel. Be it resolved, the mayor be authorized to represent the municipality of West Nipissing at the municipal leaders table of the Canadian Centre on Substance Use and Addiction, and be it further resolved that the mayor be authorized to travel outside of Ontario to Lethbridge, Alberta, for an event to be held on April the fourteenth to sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? It's Carrie, thank you.
It is moved by councillor Fetter and seconded by councillor Larrabee. Be it resolved that the field winter carnival being held from January the thirty-first to February the ninth, two thousand twenty-five, be declared a community event.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie? Thank you very much. Uh, we'll move to, uh, item nine, and I will try to keep it short as we are, uh, probably all meeting to get up from our chairs. Uh, this past week, myself, councillor Larrabee, councillor Fetter, councillor Revard, uh, were attending, uh, the Roma Conference in Toronto. Uh, again, it was, uh, another great opportunity, I believe, for our members, a lot. Uh, we participated in the zone meetings, uh, on Sunday morning, uh, with some interesting discussions, uh, regarding, uh, cellular access in, uh, some of the broadband expansion projects, uh, natural gas expansion projects, uh, and also, you know, OPP costing, uh, was, uh, another topic for the municipalities in our zone. Uh, zone meetings are a great opportunity to kind of meet, um, our colleagues regionally, um, and discuss issues that, uh, that we have in common. It was a, a good discussion led by our Roma, uh, board representative for Zone Nine, Mark Wilson, uh, councillor with Timiscan Shores. Uh, we also, during that time, had, uh, two delegations, uh, one, uh, the first one with the minister, uh, sorry, Associate Minister of Forestry under the Ministry of Natural Resources, uh, in regards to, uh, Gibbons Road in River Valley, which is currently in an impassable state. Um, and we did receive a commitment of, from the minister, um, that, uh, construction to fix that road would proceed, uh, late spring or early summer, uh, with the bit of the delay being that there are cold water fishery concerns, so they can't, uh, do, uh, any work until, uh, after, uh, kind of mid-June. But it is, uh, on the radar for the ministry. Uh, we can expect to see repairs, and that road has, uh, in the past, been critically aggressive for the community when there has been flooding. So I know that the residents of River Valley will be relieved, and I'd like to thank councillor Larrabee for bringing that, uh, that item forward. Uh, we also had the opportunity to meet with Minister of Infrastructure, uh, the Honorable Kinga Sirma. Uh, and, um, we, uh, we discussed, uh, the Burner water issue, of course. Uh, Ms. Henning and I, uh, spoke with, uh, an Associate Minister, a parliamentary assistant, uh, last year at Good Roads, and we were back. Uh, and we did receive some positive news in the fact that, uh, during the Roma Conference, uh, the Government of Ontario did announce a new funding stream, uh, for water and wastewater infrastructure projects. And we'd been hitting a bit of a wall in the fact that, um, the previous funding streams were all tied to, uh, housing, uh, creation and really meant to, to address housing shortages in the province. And this new funding stream is set out to address health and water. So it really, um, i- our, our project is far more suited, uh, to the new funding that was announced there. We've been encouraged to apply, and I, uh, note that Ms. Henning has already been, uh, looking at some of the information, and will be working with our water wastewater manager, um, to put that application forward. Um, I will add the caveat that it is a very monetarily limited fund. Um, there is not a huge dollar amount, uh, that has been, uh, promised across the province. Uh, so I expect the applications to be, uh, very competitive, uh, and probably a lot of municipalities, uh, looking for support. But, uh, we are definitely, uh, gonna be putting, uh, our name in and making a case for, uh, for those much-needed repairs and that much-needed funding for Burner. Uh, and overall, it was just a, a good conference. Again, an opportunity to speak with colleagues all across the province and, and, uh, who often deal with a lot of the same challenges. It is, it's great, uh, learning seminars, um, and, uh, sessions, and, uh, it, it was a, a great experience for me and I, I believe for all of council. So with that, I will wrap it up, and do we take the motion, oh, it's closed, or take the motion to recess?
Just going to closed and-
Okay, and then do the recess?
Motion to recess first, if you're gonna be, just if you're going into closed, then you're not gonna recess.
Yeah.
I don't know. I, I don't usually add a comment on the mayor's, uh, report, but I, 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 if I want to say this, though, not to, uh, speak against, I think we've had great delegations, uh, been to probably a hundred delegations in my career, but I, I just have to compliment, uh, this council with the delegation that, uh, that we've gone through in the last, uh, couple of years, that the, the, the quality and the presentation of this council led by the mayor, in this case, it was councillor Fetter, councillor, councillor Revard, but there have been other councillors as well involved. I just have to, because the public doesn't see that, uh, there will be a picture taken. But the quality, uh, of representation that we have is, uh, to be, I just want to speak to that because I know council wouldn't be able to say that about themselves. So I will say it for you, and I'll let you know that it's, uh, it was pretty awesome to watch. I, I sat on the outside having a look, took a few pictures, but it was, uh, the, the quality and the sophistication of the presentations, uh, I think, uh, put us in very good stead and, uh, stand us to gain, uh, because these delegations, uh, assist us when we're making a pitch to the chief decision makers and showing them the water pictures, the studies that were done. And so I just wanted to commend, uh, council, uh, because I know you wouldn't commend yourself on that, so, sorry, madam mayor.
Thank you. Uh, on that, I will also, uh, thank the, the staff that did assist in preparing the delegation materials on, on the files, uh, as well, because there was work that goes into that. And we do appreciate, uh, you know, we're able to do a good job in the room with the minister, working, um, you know, materials that are professionally prepared by our excellent staff team. What's that?
We didn't.
I, I'll need a mover. Recession, please. Revard and Gonye, okay?
It is moved by councillor Revard and seconded by councillor Gonye. Approximately eight oh eight PM, a motion was tabled for a ten-minute recess.
All in favor? Thank you.